And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us once again across the Louisiana Plain where we are elevating the cause of constitutional conservatism in Louisiana, elevating the cause of constitutional conservative citizens across the state and rapidly now draining the Louisiana swamp. My name is Chris.
And I'm Danielle, and this is the State of Freedom, brought to you by freedom-loving Louisiana-first patriots. Hello, State of Freedom warriors. Thank you for inviting us to be part of your day. We are so grateful for you. You're the best listening family anyone could possibly hope for, and we are only here because of your encouragement, your prayers, and your financial support. If you are looking for a way to support us, to advertise with us, or to send us feedback, please visit our website at freedomstate.us. We'd really appreciate it if you'd also help us get the word out and spread the reach of the State of Freedom. Please like the show on whatever platform you listen to us, subscribe to it and share it. You can share short clips instead of the full episodes from our YouTube and Rumble channels, and links to those are always in the show notes and over on freedomstate.us. Today, we're going to do a preview of the special session on crime that starts this week. And before we even get going, we want to start out with an action item. So go ahead. If you're not driving, go on over to lacag.org, L-A-C-A-G.org, or freedomstate.us and sign up for alerts from our Action Center. This will allow us to get you up to the minute calls to action by text or email, however you prefer. So let me get into the scripture of the day. It is Psalm, Chapter 78, verses 5 through 11, and it says, "The story of Israel is a lesson in God's ways. He establishes decrees for Jacob and established the law in Israel, and he commanded our forefathers to teach them to their children. For perpetuity, God's ways will be passed down from one generation to the next, even to those not yet born. In this way, every generation will set its hope in God and not forget his wonderful works, but keep his commandments. By following his ways, they will break the past bondage of their fickle fathers, who were a stubborn rebellious generation and whose spirits strayed from the eternal God. They refused to love him with all their hearts." Take, for example, the sons of Ephraim. Though they were all equipped warriors, each with weapons, when the battle began, they retreated and ran away in fear. They didn't really believe the promises of God. They refused to trust him and move forward in faith. They forgot his wonderful works and the miracles of the past. And as I read that, I was just thinking, if you look at the Bible, there's a clear pattern that when the people of God love, follow, and obey Him, when they live in submission and faith, we experience protection and blessing and prosper greatly. That happens when they remain faithful to Him. In the Bible, that's what happens when they remain faithful to Him and instill His words and His ways in their children and in society. The opposite is also true when they don't live in faithfulness to the Lord. We see this all throughout scriptures. When they didn't live in accordance to His word and remember their history with Him, when they didn't faithfully pass that history down to their children and make it part of the fabric of their society, calamity came every time. Calamity came not just because people were not walking with the Lord, but because of their lack of faith. And that's what this passage says. And what I want to underscore is, from this passage, is something that the Lord's really been emphasizing to me, that we strengthen our faith and our resolve to believe in Him by recalling His faithfulness in the past. And that's why history is so important, and that's why gratitude is so important. It empowers and strengthens us to overcome fear and to run into the battle with eyes of faith. I think those sons of Ephraim really are a cautionary tale to me. They were, "They were all equipped warriors, each with his weapon, but they retreated and ran away in fear because they didn't believe the promises of God."
Danielle, as you were reading the scripture, I was thinking, how many times in my own life, when I've been faced with a significant challenge, that I have been momentarily overcome with fear? And the reason why I'm overcome with fear is precisely because I forget momentarily how faithful God has been to me in the past, and how He has always delivered on His promises, and He's always gotten me through difficult times. But it's a very easy thing to forget when you're facing a challenge that looks like it's insurmountable sometimes. It's easy to forget that God has always been faithful. So it's such a good reminder that God is always faithful. Think of all the things that we faced in the past, and that He's gotten us through, and really gotten us through as better and stronger and more compassionate people. So it's such a good reminder just to remember, when we're going through difficult times, remember His promises and remember how faithful He has been to us in the past. I love that. Speaking of fidelity, God's fidelity, as we go into this criminal special session that is coming this week, Danielle, I look at all these bills, and I'm like, oh my gosh, there's so much here. You start to feel a little bit overwhelmed, and then you know what I think of? I think of how faithful God was in 2023. And He was so good to us. He got us through all the ups and downs, got us some great results, and I have absolutely no doubt that He will do it this time. But there are a number of criminal bills that have very significant implications for the citizens of Louisiana that will be going forward well between now and I think March 6th, when this special session ends.
Yeah, and some of these bills, Chris, really take legal eyeballs to look through them, and probably more legal eyeballs rather than fewer would be preferable. Because as a non-attorney, I can say that non-attorneys do not have a grid for some of these processes because we just haven't lived through them. We don't understand the mechanics of them. And so some of the legislation we're not happy with, I think to myself, I'm like, we need to give some of these legislators a little benefit of the doubt, especially the non-attorneys, because they may not fully understand or be able to foresee the implications of the legislation that they're putting forward. But if I'm going to be a little bit cynical or a little bit cautious, I'll say, on the other hand, I do find it concerning that legislators would be willing to put forward legislation on issues that they can't understand the implications, the long-term implications on people's lives for. This isn't like just typical policy. This has real-life implications, and it's not that they're not capable of understanding the processes. It's just that they aren't intimately familiar with those processes. Some of those are focused on sentencing and parole provisions, and anyway, they need some clarification.
Yes. And you know, I think, Danielle, the tendency on the part of legislators and conservative legislators in particular, they want to go in and they want to appear, and I think sincerely appear, as though they are tough on crime and tough on criminals. We do have a crime problem in the state of Louisiana. There's no question about that. And we could talk all day long about what the root cause of that is. But we have to be very careful that in our effort to be strong on crime and make sure that we hold criminals accountable, that we don't pass legislation or do things that not only will not reduce crime in Louisiana, but will impact unconstitutionally the rights of criminal defendants and take power out of the hands of district attorneys and judges who are really in the best position to be making some of these determinations. So that's what we have to be very, very wary of as we go into a session like this, to make sure that our eye is always on the Constitution and to make sure that our eye is always on fundamental justice. You and I are not in the business of standing up and beating our chest and saying, we're tough on crime, we're tough on crime, we're tough on crime. We are in the business principally of honoring the Constitution, and that's what we're going to do. And I think that our analysis of these bills really does so with a view to that fundamental consideration.
Yeah, and I really appreciate you saying that, Chris, because that was what struck me by some of the legislation we took a look at, because you look at it and you think, what is this really getting at? Is this really going to solve the problem that we are trying to tackle, or is this trying to make a statement? So with that in mind, there were, what, 27, 28 bills that have been prefiled to date that we know about?
I think so, Danielle. And we, let's start going through a few of them. And a number of these, Danielle, you may have mentioned this, I don't know, but a number of these are companion bills. Like, there are identical bills in the House and in the Senate, or substantially identical bills. And that would be the case with the first one we're going to talk about, which is the concealed carry legislation. Both Senator McGeez and Representative McCormick have brought concealed carry legislation. And this, of course, will allow, in our view, perfectly consistent with the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution, will allow a law-abiding citizen who's otherwise qualified to conceal carry in the state of Louisiana. And whenever I talk about concealed carry, Danielle, I think about your phrase, "What part of thou shall not infringe or shall not be infringed do you not understand?" It is our view that a law-abiding citizen has a constitutional right under the Second Amendment to conceal carry in the state of Louisiana. The legislation was brought two or three times before. As you and I both know, it was killed a couple in the past, but I believe it's ripe for passage this time. And again, with certain limited exceptions as far as locations of where you can carry, which are appropriate, Louisiana citizens, if this passes, will be able to conceal carry in the state of Louisiana. So we're very excited about the concealed carry, and of course, we encourage our listeners to support the legislation. I think at this moment, Senator McGeez's legislation is better because it explicitly repeals a prior provision of law that limits the carrying to either former or retired military. He explicitly repeals that and expands the right to all Louisiana citizens. So Senator McGeez's bill is actually the preferable bill now. That is SB1. And of course, we're encouraging our listeners to support it.
Yes, and I am so thrilled that this bill got enough interest, that of course, it does have a companion bill in the House and the Senate. And I think I will be very happy to see a lot of these moved first in the Senate, Chris, if we can, because we know that that's where we tend to have some problems. But where this bill is originating in the Senate appears to be Senate Judiciary C, which has a really strong, a really strong group of conservatives in there. So I think we'll be able to get a lot done in Senate Judiciary C, and we will see where this goes. And Senator McGeez also has a bill that is complementary to his constitutional carry bill, and that one's related to liability, and we're also in support of that.
Yeah, and this is a very important piece of legislation. This is SB2, Danielle, and it provides, it's a very simple bill, but a very important bill. And it just basically says that no person who is legally concealed carrying can be held civilly liable or sued or criminally prosecuted in any way for any actions arising out of his legal concealed carrying unless he acted with either gross negligence or intentional misconduct or in violation of any criminal law, whether it be a federal or state criminal law. In those situations, he can be held responsible, but absent that, he cannot be sued or held civilly liable for any conduct arising out of his concealed carry. And that is appropriate, and it's necessary, really, as it relates to the new concealed carry law.
Yeah. And the next one we want to take a look at is kind of shifting gears a little bit, but obviously still on kind of this criminal justice theme that the whole special session will be around. And that is HB1 by Representative, being brought by Representative Bakala. It's a transparency bill, which I like a lot, and Senator Seba has a companion bill for that in the Senate. That one will be SB13. Chris, this is one that we are supporting with the request for an amendment.
Correct. And you know, Danielle, one of the frustrations that I've heard from people is throughout the state, is that there really is not a centralized electronic database where they can go and find out information about our criminal justice system. Who's being prosecuted? What is the nature of the crimes? What is the disposition of the case? How many of these felony cases are being reduced down to misdemeanors? What is really going on within our criminal justice system? And both Representative Bakala and Senator Seba in these two companion bills establish an electronic database that will provide all of the relevant information related to any criminal defendant in the state of Louisiana. And the only suggested amendment we are making is that they include in the required disclosures on this, in this database that they're going to set up, what's called the affidavit of probable cause and the initial police report. The affidavit of probable cause has to be filed in every felony criminal case in Louisiana. It's got to be filed with the clerk, and it's a public record. And that is the document where the pertinent, more detailed factual information can be found about a given criminal case, much more so than in like the minutes of a criminal proceeding where they just put the basic facts in there, but nothing very detailed. So we want the affidavit of probable cause to be included among the requested disclosures and/or also the initial police report. In every felony criminal case, there's an initial police report that's filed, even in misdemeanor cases. And we would want that to be included in the database as well. And with the exception of those two things, which are very important, and we have requested that they be included as an amendment, it's a very good bill and really responds to the need in Louisiana for Louisiana citizens who are very concerned about crime to have a centralized database that they can go to and find out the information that they need.
Yeah, I really love this one. And I happen to think that perhaps Representative Bakala and Senator Seba have some strategy in play because they have another set of companion bills. Bakala's bringing a civil immunity for police officers that Seba has a companion to. Bakala's is HB2 in the House, and in the Senate, it's SB6. And this is another one where we do support it, but also have a request for an amendment.
Right. And this is a good piece of legislation. It'll simply require, under Louisiana law, it will provide that law enforcement officers will have immunity for their, for actions that arise out of their discretionary duties, which, under our law, basically means any official action arising out of their responsibilities as a law enforcement officer. They will be immune from civil liability unless they engage in what's called intentional misconduct or they violate any criminal law, whether it be federal or state. And then in that case, they can be sued and held liable. We're suggesting that they add something called gross negligence to the category of behavior for which they will not have immunity. And the reason why I'm saying that, Danielle, is that in Louisiana, regular, ordinary Louisiana citizens can be held liable for acting in a grossly negligent way, where they can be sued and even be criminally prosecuted under the criminal law for acting in a grossly negligent way, called criminal negligence. So if citizens can be held liable for gross negligence, law enforcement officers who are held to an even higher standard of conduct and who enjoy great power over citizens and great responsibility, they should be held liable for gross negligence as well. And so that is why we are suggesting that to both Representative Bakala and Senator Seba, that they add gross negligence as the sort of misconduct for which police officers will not enjoy immunity.
Yes. And switching to our next one, House Bill 4 by Representative Emerson, this is the first bill we'll talk about that we are in opposition to as it currently is written. And this bill divests authority and discretion away from the district attorneys. In our view, it is a wrong solution to the problem of having corrupt or ineffective DAs or judges, which we know we do have plenty of in this state.
Yes, there's very little doubt that Representative Emerson is bringing this legislation, this is HB4, in good faith. I believe that she is. But I believe it's the wrong mechanism. The bill, there's something in the criminal law, Danielle, called post-conviction relief. When a criminal defendant is convicted of a crime, there are facts and circumstances that warrant a court sometimes to give him relief or her relief even after a conviction. Maybe his counsel was not effective and failed to introduce evidence that would have exonerated him. Maybe the district attorney acted improperly and withheld evidence that would have exonerated the defendant. All these things can be considered in an application for post-conviction relief. And there's a certain time limitation for filing an application for post-conviction relief. I believe now it's two years from the date of the finality of the conviction. But there are circumstances where the judge and the district attorney can consider an application for post-conviction relief after that two-year deadline has passed, if, under certain circumstances, they feel that it is just. And one of those circumstances is when evidence that the defendant could not have known during the course of the trial or before his conviction is discovered at that point, and it's like, that would exonerate him. The court has the freedom to say, we're going to take the application late, we're going to consider it in the interest of justice. This legislation strips the DA and the judge of that type of discretion to make those fact-intensive determinations in the interest of justice. And who do you think, Danielle, is in a better position to be able to evaluate the particular facts and circumstances of a given case? It is the judge, the district attorney, with the help of the criminal defense attorney, and it's not the legislature. And I think it's just, it is unwise for the legislature to impose a blanket statutory rule that under no circumstances can a court or a district attorney consider a late-filed application for post-conviction relief. As you said at the beginning, we're talking about, these decisions have profound consequences for people's lives. And there are people right now, Danielle, who are sitting in prison, who are innocent of the crimes for which they were convicted. And there could be evidence that comes out in the future that fully would exonerate them. Maybe DNA, maybe a photographic lineup was withheld. You just never know, and you cannot automatically foreclose that window to a criminal defendant. This bill works an injustice. And at this point, Danielle, I don't know that it is really salvageable because the whole core and heart of the bill takes everything away from the DA and from the judge and imposes this hardcore rule on these applications. So we have to oppose this legislation. I haven't had a chance to talk to Representative Emerson about it yet, but you know, we are looking at everything from the perspective of the Constitution. And the Constitution is supposed to be an instrument of justice and not one that would be a vehicle for injustice, as I think this bill would be.
Yeah. And you know, Chris, as we were talking about this bill when we were kind of going through all of the proposed legislation, one of the things that really stuck out to me and was part of our conversation was, if you have a corrupt or ineffective DA or judge, get relief from that. Get relief for that problem. Don't create a long-term solution to a different problem than the one you actually have. So I think one thing that we would like to see, perhaps, is some legislation brought back that would make it easier to remove ineffective DAs and judges or corrupt DAs and judges. So that's something that we should really be looking at as a solution to the problem that I think Representative Emerson is trying to address.
Yes, that's such a good point, Danielle. And in the regular session, you and I have that, obviously, on our list of legislation that needs to be on the radar screen for sure. But I agree with you so much that, you know, unfortunately, we have bad DAs. Unfortunately, we have bad judges, and they don't always make the right decisions for the right reasons. But as you have so well said, the solution to that problem is to perhaps make it easier to recall them, or to have somebody run against them who points out these deficiencies. But the solution is clearly not to impose a hardcore statutory rule that could work profound injustice on criminal defendants.
Yeah. Okay, next bill up, House Bill 14 by Representative Wright. This one opens the door for someone who has been arrested and has a previous conviction to be named as a dangerous offender, and this is one that we are in support of.
Yes, this is a good bill because it keeps the discretion in the hands of the judge, the district attorney, the criminal defense lawyer. This basically says that, let's say someone is out there and they get arrested for drug distribution, okay? And the district attorney is about to file the charging document against that defendant. If that suspect has a prior conviction for a sex offense or a crime of violence, or even a previous conviction for manufacturing of drugs, racketeering, specific crimes like that, then he can state in his charging document that this guy is a dangerous offender because of this prior conviction. And if that's the case, he gets to go into court and argue that if he's convicted of the new charge, the sentence should be without any opportunity for probation, parole, or suspension of sentence because the court has declared him a dangerous offender. And so he'll have to serve 85% of his sentence before he can be considered for any kind of relief. I think this is a very good bill because, again, it keeps the discretion in the hands of the judge and the district attorney. This is not saying that a judge has to declare a defendant under these circumstances a dangerous offender, but he has the authority to do so. The district attorney certainly has the authority to argue for it, and the criminal defense lawyer has the opportunity to argue why it shouldn't be. And so it's a good bill to give them that latitude and that authority under those circumstances.
And one thing that I thought about for this one, Chris, just in practical terms, is it seems like it keeps repeat offenders off the streets during times of parole or probation, where we're not seeing someone just out in, you know, that revolving door in and out of the jail. I'm excited to share a fantastic opportunity for State of Freedom listeners who are interested in investing in precious metals or even starting a home-based business in the precious metals industry. MetalStax is a precious metals collectors' club where you can buy your metals at the best prices on the market, actual dealer cost. They are beating the big sites. They have no credit card fees and no minimums. If you're just interested in purchasing metals at a great price, visit metalstacks.com/dwalker. Get to shopping, that helps me out. I get the commission. You can also refer people to MetalStax for an additional income. If you're interested in learning about the referral business aspect of MetalStax, email me directly at Danielle@freedomstate.us for more information.
That's a very, very good point. Yeah, it will give, again, give the court the opportunity to reduce that when the circumstances warrant. But you know, to reiterate, I'm just very, very sensitive to taking cases that are all unique, and no two cases are the same, out of the hands of the people who are in the very best position to determine what is just in those cases.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's wisdom, Chris. And you have the, you have the experience as an attorney who's represented many people before to know how this process works, and you've just been able to shed a lot of light on things that I could not understand in the legislation. So I really appreciate that. Now, you're very welcome, on to HB7 by Representative Schlegel. This increases the mandatory, the mandatory minimum sentence for carjacking, and there is a companion bill for it in the Senate, which is SB12 by Senator Hodges. This is one, this is another one that we support.
Yeah, definitely. Carjacking, Danielle, is such a horrible crime.
Traumatizing.
It is so traumatizing. You can be sitting in your car, and somebody can run up to your car with a gun, bust your window out, jerk you out of your car, steal your car, drive away, have a gun pointed at you. These are the kind of things that traumatize people for their whole lives, once these things occur. And so this bill stiffens the mandatory minimum sentence for someone who's convicted of carjacking from two years to five years. And if the carjacking results in a person or a victim being seriously injured, then the mandatory minimum goes from what it is now, 10 years, up to 20. So they would have to serve 20, and then the maximum sentence in that case would go from 20 to 30. And the sentence, whatever sentence is imposed, would be without benefit of probation, parole, or suspension of sentence. So there would be no opportunity for any kind of a sentence reduction. And as I said, this is such a horrible crime. I think it is important for these penalties to be stiff, and I think it is appropriate. As you said, HB7, Representative Schlegel and Senator Hodges, SB12, have companion, really identical legislation. So hopefully one of those will get through and get passed and signed.
Yes, and HB8 is also by Representative Sari Schlegel. It increases mandatory minimum sentences for anyone marketing or distributing fentanyl in a way that appeals to minors. And this is a bill that I strongly support. We were, we were We were, we were talking about this prior to, just when we were working through all the legislation. And you know, the thought of someone bringing gummy bears or lollipops or brightly colored pack, you know, packaged things that look like candy to kids that have something so deadly inside of them is just beyond the pale. So I'm glad that she saw fit to bring this. And I have to say, you know, we were, we had been talking about this, and the day that we had been talking about it, or the day after, there was an article that came up on my phone, and it was talking about a, a border patrol doctor had been soliciting his staff to, to find fentanyl lollipops. And he was saying it under the, thankfully, his staff was like, that doesn't make any sense, but I think he's been arrested finally for it. But the fact that, I mean, it proves that these things do exist. I didn't know that they actually existed. I just thought maybe they existed in, in theory.
Yeah, no, they absolutely do exist. And I think Representative Schlegel is very, very prescient in bringing this legislation. She understands what's going on here. And you know, the, the bill, just very, very simply, if, if you're convicted of distributing fentanyl in a way that is obviously marketed toward minors, either by the packaging of it, you know, when it's obviously geared toward and marketed to minors, the minimum sentence for a first conviction of that is 25 years without benefit of probation, parole, or suspension of sentence, and the maximum is 99 years. So in Louisiana, if this bill passes, it is conceivable that a person who is convicted of, of marketing and manufacturing fentanyl to minors could die in prison for a first offense. And to be honest with you, anybody who is sick enough to do something like this, knowing the threat that it poses to minors and what really it's already done to minors in this state and in this country, that to me is an appropriate sentence because it is absolutely sick.
It is sick. It's completely sick. Moving, Chris, now to SB nine by Senator Mizell. She's introduced a piece of legislation that adds newly discovered photographic or video evidence at making it admissible past the statute of limitations in a rape case. And that's in addition to the discovery of DNA evidence, which is already provided for in present law. We do support this bill with a suggested amendment.
Right. It's basically saying that the normal time period to start a prosecution for a sex offense in Louisiana is either four or six years, depending upon the nature of the crime. So right now in Louisiana, a district attorney or an attorney general has either four or six years from the date of the offense to file formal charges prosecution against a defendant. This bill is saying that that time period does not apply, the regular time period does not apply if newly discovered photographic or video evidence comes up that they didn't know about before. The concern we have about this is that there is no, that is completely unconditional. It doesn't matter whether the DA was at fault for, for not discovering the evidence, because sometimes they are at fault. In fact, sometimes DAs even withhold evidence. But the fact of the matter is, so under this bill, it could be 10, 15, 20 years down the road, and the DA who should have known about this evidence 20 years before, within the statute of limitations, says, oh, let me, I want to revive this case, so I'm gonna, gonna present this evidence at this point. Well, I don't think that's, I don't think that is appropriate. I think that if they're gonna have a bill like this, there, it should say, if the newly discovered photographic evidence or video evidence was delayed because of the fault or the dilatory conduct of a prosecutor, then the statute of limitations will not be extended. They have to show that they have no fault in the fact that the evidence was just now being produced. Because if that's the case, because if that's the case, then you're talking about criminal defendants who may be 20, 25, 30 years down the line, and they're being prosecuted. And I don't think that that is fair to anybody, anybody who's presumed to be innocent under our constitution.
And it seems, Chris, like that would also give some level of permission to DAs to be sloppy in their work.
Yes, I mean, and we have a lot of good DAs in the state. Most of them are very good, but you're exactly right. This creates a real disincentive to make sure that they diligently seek all of the evidence and present all of their evidence within the statute of limitations. Because if they don't, and it's photographic or video evidence, then they can extend the normal time period to prosecute. And if they can do it for this type of evidence, who's to say that next year they're not going to be presenting legislation that allows an extension of, of the time period for any type of newly discovered evidence? This just opens a Pandora's box, I think, that is not preferable. So I do believe there has to be a provision in there that says if, if this delay is because of the prosecution's dilatory conduct or fault, then absolutely not, you're not extending the statute of limitations.
And HB 15 by Representative Boyd is also about rape. And this one basically, as you looked at it, Chris, we, we kind of came to the conclusion that it basically ends the statute of limitations on rape convictions. So we are opposing this one for a lot of the same reasons that you just mentioned about the Mizell bill.
That's right. This, this extends, this basically extends the time limitations to commence or begin a prosecution really indefinitely. Right now, it's six years, six years right now for a crime of first degree or third degree rape for the DA to file formal charges. That's six years. This bill says that if the crime is allegedly committed under circumstances where the victim is either drunk or drugged, even if she is the one who did it to herself, but the perpetrator or alleged perpetrator should clearly know that she's not in any position to be consenting to this because she's not in her right frame of mind, then this bill gives that victim basically an indefinite amount of time to bring charges because it says until the crime is discovered by the victim. So what is to keep someone from 10, 15, 20 years down the line, maybe going back even those, and saying, look, I just remembered that this occurred to me. I just discovered or remembered this, so I want to prosecute this young man 20 years down the line. I think this is very, very dangerous, quite frankly. And you think about this, Danielle, think about how vulnerable our young men are now in our society. Look at Brett Kavanaugh. I'll give you a perfect example. What he went through when he was trying to be, when he was nomination process for the Supreme Court, this person who comes out 30 years later and starts, you know, hashing up all these charges against him, sexual charges. I don't want to create vulnerability for decent and innocent young men who really haven't done anything wrong, but they have an alleged victim, a young lady who, who years down the line may, maybe decides that she wants to, to file criminal charges against him. I think it's a bad bill, and I hope it gets killed.
Yes, and you know, as we were discussing this one, Chris, I, I kind of was probing and said, well, is, if this is, is it directed toward minors? Because I could see, you know, if you, if there's a five-year-old, a six-year-old, a 10-year-old that's raped and has kind of a, you know, one of those emotional responses where you completely blackout the memory, and then it comes back to you when you're, say, 19, 20 years old, 25 years old, well, that, I could see that this would be a place for that. This, that would make a lot of sense to me. But you said this, something like that does actually already exist in the law. Is that right?
It absolutely does. And I completely agree with you, Danielle, that in the case of, of minors, I totally believe the, the idea of repressed memory. There are minors who are so traumatized sexually that, that they literally block it out of their mind simply in order to survive, simply in order to be able to cope. And very often, you know, 15, 20, 30 years down the line, it recurs and, and they think about it, and that's really the first time they have a real memory of it. And in that situation, I absolutely believe that they should have the right to bring an action. But we're talking here about adults, and we're talking, you know, they already have six years from the date of the offense for, to bring the charges, for the DA to bring charges. And again, I just think that this, the potential for abuse here, we know, Danielle, that, I mean, all the women I know are very, very good women, and they would never think about lying about something like this. But unfortunately, we've seen it more often than we care to, 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 look at the Duke lacrosse case, you know, the, the lady who, girl who just completely lied. Look at, again, Brett Kavanaugh.
E. Jean Carroll with, with President Trump.
E. Jean Carroll with President Trump? I mean, you're basically, this, this is a law that would create an opportunity for malicious women 10, 15, 20 years from the date of alleged offense to maybe not only destroy a guy's reputation publicly, but prosecute him criminally for it. And it's just, just a bad bill. And I hope, I hope that our legislators are smart enough to understand that.
Yeah, and I think it definitely bears mentioning to Representative Boyd, the piece about the, this, this kind of bill and protection already existing for minors, because maybe that would cause her to withdraw the bill. All right, moving on to SB eight with, from Representative Reese. This was an attempt, or this bill attempts to establish a state public defender's office, and we oppose this one.
Yeah, this is Senator Reese. I certainly understand Senator Reese's intent here. We have problems with the public defender system in Louisiana, but this bill would, would, as you said, Danielle, create the office of the state public defender within the governor's office for delivery of indigent defense services. It's basically a czar within the office of the governor that would control the process and the funding of indigent defense for basically poor criminal defendants, poor people who are charged with crimes. And, you know, a couple of objections to this. It, this bill takes the control and the authority out of the local level. As a conservative, I've always believed that not only that, the government that governs least governs best, but the government that is most local to the people governs best. Well, this takes it out of the control of the local authorities who really know the ins and outs of these cases and places it in Baton Rouge, in the governor's office. And, you know, so no matter how experienced a state public defender may be, the, the local connection, the local environment, and knowledge of the local citizenry that is so important to effective government is lost here. And the second concern here, and even the greater concern, is a constitutional one. There may be a separation of powers issue here regarding this. If you look at Federalist 47, Danielle, tyranny, tyranny is defined as the accumulation of all powers, legislative, executive, and judiciary in the same hands, whether it be a few hands, one hand, or many, or, and whether the person who's holding the power is elective or self-appointed. That is the definition of tyranny, according to Federalist 47. So when you think about that, and then think about what the governor's constitutional responsibility is, his responsibility is to support the constitution and laws of the state and see that they're faithfully executed. So that's his job. So how is it not a conflict of interest on some level and, and really a violation of the accumulation of powers principle for a governor whose responsibility is to see that the laws are faithfully executed, to be appointing the very individual who's going to head the biggest entity in the state that defends poor people who are accused of crimes? It, it doesn't seem like it's, it seems just too close to, it gives the governor too much power over an agency that is responsible for making sure that poor people, that their fundamental right to a fair defense and a vigorous defense is honored. I'm not comfortable putting this in the governor's office. There has to be real independence between the governor's office and the, the body of our state that's charged with protecting the basic constitutional rights of criminal defendants. And that's especially the case when you look at the power that the governor already has. The governor has the power to pardon people, to grant clemency, to commute sentences. So, you know, we're going to be giving him even more power. He already has great power after a conviction as far as clemency. He doesn't need to be involved in the process leading up to a conviction. That, that is not a proper role for the governor.
A hundred percent. You know, after living through the last eight years of the most recent imperial governor, I think consolidating further power into the, specifically the Louisiana governorship is just a fool's errand. And, and I mean, we can't support it at all. I think if anything, the governors, the role of the governorship needs to begin divesting power and giving it back to the people. But that's a, that's a topic.
That is so well said. That, Danielle, that is, that's so well said. I mean, that's, that is something that I just have to respond affirmatively on that because, you know, our governor already has so much power. We should be in the business of divesting our governor of power and returning the, the proper authority to the legislature that, that truly is its. I want to make one, one final point about this. Governor Landry has made it very, very clear that he wants to move very aggressively against crime. He wants to, to push hard against crime, to penalize criminal defendants more harshly, to increase their sentences. And that is his policy prerogative as the governor. But when you consider that, is it wise to put in his hands also the appointment of the state public defender who's responsible for making sure that poor people's rights are protected? They don't go together.
No.
They just don't go together. And so I'm very concerned about the bill. We will be opposing it. If they want to improve the public defender system, they ought to get all the current district defenders together all over the state and talk to them about what's going on. The governor ought to meet with them and talk to them and, and revamp it that way, not create a whole new office that he controls.
Well said, absolutely well said. Now, we'll switch gears again and move to House Bill 13 by Representative Wright. This one is a forfeiture of good time credits for inmates, and we oppose this one as well, Chris.
Yeah, we're opposing this because, again, there are certain crimes for which, you know, a criminal defendant can be, if he's convicted, can be deprived of his mandatory good time credits. And, you know, for people who don't know, Danielle, good time credits basically mean if someone is serving time in prison and they complete their GED, or they sponsor a workshop that teaches other inmates how to communicate better, or they start a chaplaincy in the jail where people get together regularly and pray, any number of things they can do to show their good faith, to show that they are being, those are called good time credits, and they can get reduction in their sentence for doing things like that. Well, this bill says would positively take away any and all right for a defendant to get those credits if he's convicted of a crime of violence or other serious crimes. Again, I don't think this is a legislative function. This is a role of the Department of Public Safety and Corrections to make those determinations on a case-by-case basis, and ultimately the judge, if it, if it comes to that. But again, the legislature should not be making these sweeping generalizations about who is entitled to good time credits and who isn't. They don't know the cases. They're not intimately familiar with the ins and outs of these cases, and it works a real injustice by depriving an agency that really does have the knowledge to make these decisions. So we oppose this bill for that reason.
Yeah, I think we really are opposed to some of these broad brush stroke type of legislative pieces. And the reason I'm really in opposition to this on top of that is because you are stripping these agencies from their ability to incentivize inmates from reforming.
Oh, gosh, Danielle, you know, that is the best point of all of this. Anytime we see this, this type of legislation that says, okay, if you do this and you get convicted of this, you have no opportunity under any circumstances to earn good time credits by starting a Bible study, by working hard every day in the field, by showing extra respect to the warden, all kind, by getting your GED or completing a trade, no way you'll... So what does that do, Danielle? You're exactly right. It creates such a disincentive. It crushes their morale. It makes them feel hopeless, and it really does. I think it's bad for that reason, and, and you just really hit the nail on the head.
And for SB 10 by Senator Kathy And for SB 10 by Senator Kathy, this one is also related to good time credits, uh, but we are in support of it. It's reducing available good time credits for an inmate convicted of killing a first responder.
Yeah. And I believe, Danielle, that there are certain crimes, my own estimation, for which a substantial amount of good time credits or diminution of sentence should be compromised. And one of those cases is where someone is convicted basically of killing a law enforcement officer in the line of duty. Okay? Uh, that is, it doesn't really get more heinous than that. They've either pled guilty or they've had a trial and they've been found guilty of doing that. This bill would reduce the amount of good time credit that that person can get to one day of good time for every 30 days in custody for good behavior. I think that is a good proportion considering the severity of that offense.
Yes. And, and you know, it is still a little more, uh, forgiving than Representative Wright's bill, which forfeits good time credits. This one is reducing the amount that you can get.
Right. And it's doing it, and Wright's bill is doing it in a many, many types of crimes and cases. Senator Kathy is doing it in one type of case where someone's basically been convicted of killing a police officer. So it's, it's a very different type of bill. And as you said, it diminishes, it doesn't completely eliminate the possibility for good time.
Yep. And lastly, the last set of bills we're looking at today are SB 11 by Senator Kathy and SB three by Senator Cloud. They're very similar bills and they would both change the definition of a child. So offenders as young as 17 years old can be prosecuted as an adult. I strongly oppose this. We strongly oppose this. Um, I just think it's wrong-headed, Chris. As we were discussing, your brain is not even fully developed, I think, until you're 25 as a, as a male, maybe a little bit younger as a female. Why should we be putting these kids into Angola, into these hardcore prisons when they're not even capable of understanding the full extent of, uh, there's, there's no understanding of, um, cause and effect in their, in their mind? It's not fully gelled for them yet.
That's right. That's exactly right. They're not fully developed. And if I'm reading these two items of legislation accurately, Senator Kathy's SB 11 and Senator Cloud's SB three, which are substantially the same, it looks like if, if these bills pass, or one of these bills passes, then anybody who is 17 years or older could be prosecuted as an adult for any crime in Louisiana. Let's say you just turned 17. You, no, no, it actually says you're not a child under this bill. You're not considered a child for purposes of criminal prosecution if you're 17 or older, which therefore makes it mandatory that you be prosecuted as an adult because you're, under this law, you're not a child. If you're, on your 17th birthday, you're no longer considered a child in Louisiana under this bill for purposes of a criminal prosecution, which means you have to be prosecuted as an adult. And I agree with you, Danielle, that I, I think this is wrong-headed. There is already a provision in the law that allows the district attorney or the attorney general to prosecute a minor as an adult in exceptional cases, capital cases, murder cases, and very heinous cases. But this establishes it as a matter of rule, and I do not agree with it, and, and we just have to oppose this and for reasons that you mentioned.
Yes. And I just, you know, one of the big conversations that we will have on the margins of this session, I'm sure, is recidivism. And how can you expect a child to be rehabbed if you don't treat them as a child? If you don't put them in a safer place like a juvenile detention center, but you put them in one of these high-security prisons with grown hardened criminals? That, that is a huge problem for me.
It is. And I don't see how that, like you said, that does anything to reduce the possibility that, that that child i- is going to become a, a recidivist, uh, criminal. Uh, in fact, it probably will produce just the opposite result. You know, one of the things that popped into my head while you were talking, Danielle, is that of all these bills, and, and there are a number of bills that we're not even talking about today because they're not as significant as these, but we know what they are. But of all these bills that we've looked at, all 26 or 27 bills that have been prefilled, I haven't seen one bill that focuses on enhancing or reinvigorating the rehabilitation opportunities for people who are accused of crimes, even people who've been convicted of crimes. You know, the Supreme Court ruled, uh, in the Miller case two or three years ago, that particularly in the case of minors, that it is the very rare child that is beyond the capacity for rehabilitation. No matter what they've done, most children, because they are still developing, have the capacity for rehabilitation. I would argue that most adults have the capacity presumptively for rehabilitation. Now, there are some that absolutely do not. But where are the bills that would enhance opportunities for people to heal and to rehabilitate and to find the things that there, that were lost to them and to rediscover who they are so that they can go and become productive members of society? Most of these bills are focused strictly on harsher penalties, either parole probation or conviction penalties for criminal defendants. And I see very little, I see nothing here that focuses on the rehabilitation, and it's unfortunate. And it, it has to be a major component of any criminal defense legislation.
I agree. And another point that you and I have discussed, Chris, that we have not seen in any of this legislation is a look at our jail capacity and our juvenile detention center capacity. Do we have the ability to physically back up all of these harsher penalties?
Well, you know what this is gonna do, Danielle? The answer is no. We do have a, a, a jail crowding problem now. So I don't know whether this is potentially the first step toward having private jail facilities crop up all over the state, which are a disaster, because the amount of money that they receive is directly contingent upon how many inmates they have. And they have a profit incentive to save money, which means that the defendants and the inmates may not receive the care that they need. I have a real problem and I'm very skeptical about these private, privately funded jail facilities. I don't know whether that's what this is leading to or not, but even if it's not, you're right, there is a problem with the jail. So how do we handle this? If all these, these provisions get passed, we're gonna have 50% more people either going to jail or remaining in jail. Where are we gonna put them?
Yeah. I think those are two conversations, both the rehab and the facilities that need to be part of this special session as well. So we'll be taking that to some different legislators who may be able to help pick us, pick some things up on that front.
And I'm very, very excited about moving forward. Danielle, do you want to remind, before we go, do you want to remind the listeners again about what the call to action is? I want to make sure they got it.
Yes. By all means, please visit lacag.org or you can visit freedomstate.us and sign up for our action alerts. So as we learned in the last, well, in last year's session, things can get to moving really quickly. They can move quicker than our ability to put out a podcast. So the absolute best way to stay informed of the things that matter to us will be by visiting those websites, signing up and being sure to get action alerts either by text or by email or both. We are very excited to be able to bring those to you, um, starting basically, what, Tuesday?
Yes. Please go get signed up and get the calls to action. We learned in the 2023 session that grassroots advocacy works. It works, it works, it works. And the more people who are engaged, the greater the likelihood that we're gonna preserve our state as a place that is prosperous and that honors the constitution and is attuned to the values and the convictions and the desires of Louisiana citizens, which is what we are all about, Danielle. The State of Freedom and LACAG are all about protecting the constitution and serving the citizens of our state. So I want to say on that front, how thankful I am for all of our listeners to the State of Freedom. We couldn't be doing what we're doing without you. Please continue to subscribe and share. We are revolutionizing the way political advocacy is done in Louisiana. We're expanding by leaps and bounds. Thank you for your support and please continue to support us. And how do they do that, Danielle?
Yes. You can support us or you can inquire about advertising at freedomstate.us. And you can also, um, send a gift if you would like to PO Box 861, Burge, Louisiana, B-O-U-R-G, Louisiana, 70343. Chris, it's so funny today. I feel like we're really getting back onto the horse. We haven't done this in a while. Go through a litany of legislation. It, it took quite a lot of work to get to where we are, understanding all the legislation. I know you combed through it with a fine-tooth comb. Um, and, you know, I maybe added some thoughts here or there, but you are really doing the lion's share of work on that. So we're so grateful for that. We're so grateful. You and Katie will be at the legislature next week, holding people accountable, giving them great ideas, helping them know how to best improve pieces of legislation. And, um, I think we're gonna really see some great outcomes next week. If people want to support LACAG, please do. You can visit us at lacag.org to do that. And Chris, you can give them the PO box if they wanted to send a gift to you by mail.
L-A-C-A-G, PO Box 64952, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, 70896. You will sleep well at night knowing that you are contributing to the infrastructure and to the resources of your eyes, your ears, and your voice in the legislature. So much happens there that directly affects you. We need to be there. We have, need to follow it. We need to hold our legislators accountable and we will continue to do that, but we need your support so that we can continue to build the resources and continue to protect you. That's what we're doing. So please either go online and donate, become a member, or, uh, mail us a donation by mail, the address I just gave you.
Perfect.
And Danielle, I have to tell you, it is, how does an hour go by when it seems like it's about 30 seconds? It's like time flies when you're having fun and I'm always having fun. It's like it's always so fun doing what we do and it is fun knowing that we're making a contribution, advancing the cause of righteousness and day by day preserving the State of Freedom in Louisiana.
Yes, it is. More fun than should be legally allowed, Chris.
Amen.
Amen. Thanks for listening to The State of Freedom. To stay on top of all the calls to action we mentioned today, just check out the show notes for the episode. If you'd like to support the show financially, visit our website at freedomstate.us. If you'd prefer to give by mail, you can send a check to the State of Freedom LLC at PO Box 861, Burge, Louisiana, 70343. If you own a business in Louisiana and are interested in supporting our show by advertising, please email us at info@freedomstate.us. To get involved with Louisiana Citizen Advocacy Group, visit lacag.org, L-A-C-A-G.org, or email chris@lacag.org. If you're enjoying the podcast, please subscribe and share it. Give us a five-star rating in the reviews. Thanks again, everybody. We'll see you next time.